Conservation District. It's at the entrance of El Granada. Currently residential units are allowed. A major issue here is the segment of the community would like residential units not to be permitted there. Another major task is the comprehensive revision and update of LCP-sensitive habitats map for the midcoast. That map was originally prepared in 1979 based on data available at that time. Since then, more authoritative resources have become available such as the Cow Fishing Games Natural Diversity Database and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service National Wetlands Inventory. And we have incorporated those databases plus additional information has become available over the last 20 years from individual biological reports on projects and other inventory materials. Our related task calls for revising and updating the LCP definition of wetlands in order to avoid deviations from the coastal commission's wetland definition. So that will be brought to you as well. There also is a problem, excuse me, a proposal for a new zoning standard to limit the amount of impermeable surfaces associated with new development in the midcoast. And this ties in with the county's non-point pollution program or the stop program. I think I'm going to stop this cursory overview of the substance here and go to the process, which is the focus of today's meeting. However, however, in the staff report as attached in three, I have prepared a document that's entitled Summary Sheets. And in this document, a page is devoted to each of the tasks and it describes the key issues and current status of each task. And it includes the midcoast community council's recommendations, staff recommendations. And this document is in addition to be an attachment to your staff report. It's also on the planning division's website and can be referred to throughout this process. I plan to prepare individual focused staff reports for each of the tasks as we go through them, but it's always nice to have as an at a glance document that summarizes the status of each of these tasks when they're transmitted to the commission. As I indicated earlier, during the past year, there have been 21 community workshops to discuss the alternatives and narrow the field of policy proposals. Each of these 21 workshops were held in the midcoast, primarily in El Granada, and were held in the evening. For each task, our objective was to identify the policy proposals that were preferred by the most of the workshop participants and also to identify the chief minority viewpoints. To do this, I establish a process of straw vote polling, straw vote polling of the workshop speakers. Concerns have been raised, and you'll probably hear that today and in letters, that the straw vote polling results do not represent community opinion, particularly at those workshops where there was a low turnout or when there was a large number of participants representing one single interest. In response, staff believes that the straw poll polling, straw vote polling was helpful in determining majority and minority viewpoints. And it is not the end of the process. Actually, it's located near the beginning of the process. And there will be many hearings ahead before your commission for members of the public to present additional public testimony and for you to develop your final policy recommendation. I look at this as just one of the many inputs that go into the planning commission conservation process. And I thought it would be beneficial for the commission to know of those who attended these public workshops, where they fell on the, where they sorted themselves out on the different alternatives. In addition to the workshops, the midcoast community council has held its own series of meetings on this project and has forwarded a letter with its recommendations for each task. I included the body of the letter in the staff report and I have passed out the attachments which came by regular mail after the staff report went out. I've passed those out to your commission today. So in front of you, you'll find the attachments to the coastal, to the midcoast community As I indicated, the primary purpose of this first planning commission meeting is to focus on the process that your commission wishes to follow when considering this process and project. In particular, we will be discussing the project's schedule, including the order in which the tasks will be discussed, how many meetings that we'll have, which of the meetings will be on the coast and which will be in the evenings, and how many of the meetings should go. And that's what I see as probably the emphasis of today's meeting is to establish a process for the next couple of months. Relating to the ordering of tasks. Okay, related to the ordering of tasks, the midcoast community council has requested that the new design review standards be adopted as soon as possible. And in response, we are recommending that your commission consider the design review standards first in advance of the remaining tasks. And then after your commission has developed a recommendation with board supervisors, that the design review standards be broken off as a separate amendment and forwarded to the board supervisors. And we look at this as an opportunity to fast track that one task of the 23. And this came from the midcoast community council. Also related to sequencing, a Princeton landowner group known as PCAC has suggested that the tasks related to increasing commercial and job generating land uses primarily at Princeton and also the tasks related to the airport overlay also be expedited. And in response, we're recommending that your commission consider those tasks second after design review. So at the next meeting, I'm proposing that you consider the design review standards and take testimony. And then the following meeting, we look at the tasks that relate to land use, particularly commercial and job generating opportunities at Princeton and Hafnun Bay Airport, as well as revising the airport overlay zone. And same way, we are recommending that once you have developed your recommendation with board supervisors, those amendments be broken off and forwarded to the board supervisors as a separate project. Then that takes care of three of the 23 tasks. What we're recommending is that the remaining 20 tasks then be considered and they stay together as one project. So what the, based on requests that came from the midcoast council and from the Princeton property owner group, that is now a 23 task project, we're recommending that after that we sequence it, that task six, design review be considered first by your commission, then task eight and nine related to commercial development at primarily Princeton and the AO zone, that be considered next. And then afterwards, we'll take the remaining tasks and we'll, and these will be forwarded to the planning commission as two smaller projects than one larger project. To increase public participation, we recommend that at least 30% of the planning commission meetings be held during the evening on the coast side with a balance of the meetings held in regular city. I imagine you will hear testimony today asking that that number be adjusted and I would be someone that will be talking about how many meetings your commission wishes to have on the coast side versus in this room. To further foster local attendance, we recommend that the coast side meetings be held in the evening from seven o'clock to 10:30 PM. And for less conflict with the other agenda items that you'll be entertaining, usually the typical development requests that you consider at your regular meetings, so that they're, to reduce the conflict, we recommend that the meetings held in regular city be like today's meeting held in the afternoon after the permanent items and the other items on your agenda. On the screen is a tentative meeting schedule that we put together for your review that embodies the parameters that just gone over. As you can see, it programs your commission's review of the tasks through next February. It utilizes every meeting that is now scheduled. And we, in addition, and this was, these were the meetings that I based the 30% for the coast and versus regular city. I should note that I've also scheduled two additional meetings in March. And one of the meetings would be so much, much like a wrap-up meeting. It'd be for any bring back items that you've requested, any loose ends that you've asked us to get, that you've asked us to get more information on. So we'll have one meeting in March for bring back items and then one, and then a second meeting in March for final consideration of the actual LCP amendment wording for all of these tasks. What I'm planning on doing, what I've done thus far, is I've organized my analysis in the meetings of these tasks at a conceptual level. Basically, we have different proposals. We don't have the actual final ordinance wording or the policy wording. We have concepts. Do you want to allow, yes, Commissioner Williams?
You mean March or February?
In March. Two additional meetings in March.
But it says two.
Well, right. I'm adding, in addition, I ran out of room on this, this here. It's in the staff report. Again, in the written report, there are two additional dates. And those are for, one for bring back items and the other one would be for the final language. I also chose to cut off this list here because I based the 30% on coast side on the meetings that run through February 23rd because those are the meetings where we have the discussion of each task. And then we have, after these meetings, we have any type of continuance, continuing What I'm proposing are different concepts, like that we create something here, whether we merge, whether we, what the community is proposing for these workshops. And I haven't developed a final policy language. And one reason for that is I did not want to invest a lot of time in developing the final ordinance language if the, if the commission is not endorsing that proposal or if the commission comes up with another approach. So what I would recommend is as you go through these tasks, when you take an action, we take it as a conceptual direction, a direction on an item in concept, and then I'll bring back the final language that carries out that direction for the meetings, the meetings in March that has the ordinance text. So for example, the annual residential growth one, that's one of the easy ones. I mean, there's a range of options right now. If you gave me concept approval for a certain number, let's say your commission believes that the number should be reduced to 80 units a year for 125, then I would take that and come back in March with the ordinance text that would allow that to happen. So basically, these are for conceptual consideration and then in March, we'll bring back the ordinance text. Before closing, I'd like to note that all of the project proposals are intended to apply in the midcoast only. And that's the area defined as the project area shown on both these maps. These are the same maps, just one for you. However, the project does include changes to the definition of sensitive habitat. It includes changes to the definition of wetlands. And these two terms apply, are tied to policies that apply throughout the coastal zone. In addition, the project includes some cleanup clarification wording changes for some policies that apply in the midcoast as well as outside the midcoast. I bring this up because at some point in the future, I'm not asking you this today, we will be asking your commission to decide whether these changes should be restricted to the midcoast or, let's say for example, the definition of wetlands, should it be applied the same throughout the coastal zone? If your approach is to, we'll have a midcoast definition of wetlands and then we'll have the remainder of the coastal zone a different definition, that's fine, we can go forward. However, if your preference is to have one coastal zone-wide definition, then we would, I should note that we would then require, it would require broadening the project, its notification, its participation, to include the entire coastal zone that's affected by that, which would be the rural and south coast residents, all the areas outside of the midcoast. And so at some point, we will be bringing for your consideration whether it would be prudent, whether your preference is to have a midcoast-only revision because this is a midcoast project, it will come back and deal with the other areas later, or that the definition is good and it should be applied throughout the coastal zone. And at that time, if that's your prerogative, we'd have to open up this project to everybody in the coastal zone to participate in these definitions, these policies. And so to be broader participation, including like I indicated, rural and south coast residents also would involve the Pescadero Municipal Advisory Council. Up till now, I've been working with midcoast participants only and it was believed, the, this project has been moving forward with the understanding that everything affects just the midcoast. All the changes are limited to just the midcoast. However, again, if you choose that it makes sense not to have two definitions, then we would broaden the participation. Finally, I'd like to note that we've received correspondence from the midcoast community council, the committee for green foothills, the San Mateo County Association of Realtors. We received a fax yesterday from a landowner named O'Leary in Princeton, which I've passed on to you. And we've also received 15 minutes before the meeting began, a fax from the city of Hafnun Bay, I think the planning commission, which I've passed out to your commission. All of these have been distributed to commission and copies are in, at the door. In closing my presentation today, we recommend that your commission endorse the hearing processes that's described in the staff report and that I've been discussing today. And I guess in closing, just to note again, that with this proposal, the next, the next hearing for this project would be in two weeks on the coast to discuss the design review standards. And that would conclude my staff presentation.
I have a few additional comments I'd like to make beyond what George has covered. I just wanted to note briefly, well, George is focusing on the LCP update when appropriate. So the schedule on page four of your staff report does show you where another important project coming before you this fall will be factored into your overall schedule, and that's the housing element of the general plan. And so I just wanted to point out that interspersed along the way here, we have currently three meetings on the housing element. And two of those occur on days in which you'll also be considering the LCP update. One of those, the initial one is on September 10th. That would be in the afternoon, we're going to meet over in room 101. Supervisors Gordon and Jacobson have asked for an opportunity to meet with the commission before you really get into the housing element to tell you about the work of the county housing task force that they've been involved with over the last several months. So that'll be at 3:30 on 9/10. And then that evening, we'll cut over to the coast for one of these sessions on the tasks eight and nine. And on the 24th, in the afternoon, we'll be hearing the housing element. That day, there's no other, there's no action on the, there's no consideration of the LCP update. And then on November 12th, we're proposing to have the last hearing on the housing element in the afternoon, followed by a discussion of the LCP update growth limits on the coast in the evening. So I just wanted you to be aware of that and that you're going to have another important policy matter to consider along the early stages of revising of the LCP. They're not connected, but we wanted you to be aware of the internal relationships in the schedule.
Terry, do you, I realized after you'd gotten halfway through that, I wished I'd been taking notes and just writing in on the schedule, but do you have that in black and white?
It's actually in the same board of your staff report. It has a slightly different schedule with those dates added in.
Okay, I, you know, I did see that and I'm, I'm sorry, I thought I was relating.
If you look at page four.
Yeah, I see it, I see it. Now, I understand, I understand that it's there. I read that the first time, but I didn't realize, now, that clarified it.
And then the second comment I wanted to make was that, well, I think George covers it in his written remarks. I wanted to emphasize that, whilst I'm sure obvious to everybody in the room, that there's, that this encompasses a lot of work already done and yet to come. And I think on many of these tasks that are on the screen, I, I'll be perfectly candid, I didn't attend this, well, I guess I went to one or two of these, I don't know. But we've pretty much left this in George's capable hands and I'm very proud of the job he's done on this, but I wasn't there myself, I have to admit. But I know on many of these that he had multiple meetings in the community to deal with any given task. And here we have a list which suggests that the planning commission deal with multiple tasks in one meeting. And there's a realistic limit to what a meeting like that can involve time-wise. And so I think as you go through this today, besides dealing with the order of items here, the schedule, when we'll be meeting on the coast, when we'll be here, what will be taken up, I think you need to give some consideration to ground rules as well that you intend to follow during this process so that the public can understand that from the beginning. To me, that would be the, I think in addition to start times for these meetings, you need to talk about your goal for ending these meetings so people understand the time available. And then I think within that context, you need to talk about the ground rules for presentations and what you're really expecting from the public at this point. George has put, and the public has put a lot of, have put a lot of time into getting us to where we are. There's been a lot of discussion and debate and work done out in the community and by the staff here at the county. I think it's fair, I think I could probably speculate, I think everyone pretty much understands everyone else's point of view at this point in the process. They heard all of the arguments for this and against that. And I think they pretty much know where they stand and what they would like versus what someone else would like and largely why. And my feeling is this process needs to focus on communicating those positions clearly and efficiently to the commission and leaving time for the commission to deliberate among those different points of view. I think while George's process is coming for its share of criticism, in the end, what he's done is he's presented, I think as clearly as he can, the differing points of view that exist in the community. And while it could be drawing over the magnitude of support for those points of view, I think his summary report does a good job of laying them out there so that you can see what staff is recommending, what the midcoast community council is recommending, and what other segments of the community are recommending on each of these topics. And so I think at this point, what really needs to be going on is for you to get those basic positions down and have time during each of these sessions to deliberate those different points. And as George said, reach a tentative decision that provides the guidance to George that he needs to go to the next step, which is preparing actual amendment language for your consideration at the end of this process. So when we take any day up there, can a build out data and non-conforming parcels, we need to think about the ability to take meaningful testimony on those items, have deliberation among the commissioners about the different points of view that you're going to have at that point, and then make at least a preliminary decision among those alternatives or some other alternative that you prefer that provides the guidance George needs. And I would argue that on any given day, we're going to have two to three hours to have a meaningful discussion about all that. And so setting some rules about how that works, I think would be important.
Terry, I'm going to interrupt for a moment. We just have a minor medical emergency here that's going to require about two or three minutes. So we're going to take a slight recess. Thank you so much. So there's no mystery. I've got something in my eye I need to wash out. Very busy eye here, I've been trying not to aggravate my attention.
I'm concerned about dealing with the jobs creation in two areas when we haven't dealt with housing element. And that gives us an opportunity to deal with jobs, housing types of discussions. And it comes awkward to have already decided what the answer is and made your piece of ground and sent that on to the board supervisors. Just something to think about.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think it'll open this to the public. And if you would just restrain yourselves and we will give everybody three minutes. I think that's a fair beginning. So I will try to call, what do you call it, I will give you two phantoms. Here, I want Paul Perkadik first, followed by Catherine Slater-Carter in Montara. So help us out, Paul.
Okay, good afternoon, Chair Kennedy of the members of the commission. My name is Paul Perkadik. I live in Montara, which is in the study area. I think you've seen Sandy Emerson recently appearing as chair of the midcoast community council. She recently resigned because of some medical issues with her partner. And we have a vacancy on the council and I was selected to be chair for the remainder of the term until December. So I'm addressing you today as chair of the council. And I'm not going to talk about the substantive issues as much as the procedural ones. Your meetings are generally on the second and fourth Wednesdays. Our evening meetings are generally also on the second and fourth Wednesdays. If you choose to hold your meetings on the coast on those second and fourth Wednesday evenings, we have discussed at the council level that we probably will cancel our council meetings for those evenings because most of the council members were going to attend those meetings. What we would have coming up on our agenda the next couple of months would be candidate night forums, and we can sponsor those on other nights and operating meeting nights. So don't look at our schedule as an interference with your schedule. Take the coast meetings at your convenience. Secondly, I would like to say that Sandy has done tremendous amount of work on putting this document together and is coordinated with April Vargas and Chuck Kozak, who will be talking to you later, and all members of the council that contributed to the report we put together. And I'm glad to say that in many respects, we strongly support staff analysis and staff recommendations. And in areas where we have a difference of opinion, I think we try to give some back to that. And third, I'd like to sort of back off from this whole process and take a more global view. We've had people in the community, property owners, residents advocating for their specific interests. But we really should keep in mind that the local coastal program is a local implementation of the mandates of the California Coastal Act. It was enacted in 1976, following the coastal initiative in 1972, done statewide, whose goals were to preserve coastal resources, to preserve and protect coastal resources for future generations. And I hope that you can keep in mind the long-term goals of making the coast, San Mateo County coast, an attractive and productive and ecologically sound place to visit, to support species, to support vital industries that can only be located on the coast, such as our fishing industries and the visitor serving needs. And keep those paramount in your consideration. Location of particular commercial development or housing development, although it may be desirable to locate in the coastal zone, that can be located in other parts of the state or the country. But the things that depend on the land sea interface and the environmental needs of folk creatures that we share the earth with, that depend on some of those areas, can only be located in the coastal zone. So I hope you keep that in mind during your consideration of this process. And I try to stay within three minutes. Thank you.
You did very well today. Thank you so much. Catherine Slater-Carter, followed by, is this correct, Margaret Delano?
Delano. Good afternoon, commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. And I can't say strongly enough how much I appreciate the opportunity to have a local coastal program review and the resources that the county and the staff have put towards this and the effort. I'm truly impressed. And George has done a tremendous amount of work and he comes with a lot of knowledge having been here, I think, since the initial draft of the local coastal plan in the 1980s. So we're very, very appreciative of that. I think that Paul's point I want to reiterate, and that is that looking at the coast side as an integral part of the state and of the coastal act should be an underlying philosophic basis for any decision-making. I just had the experience of driving up the Pacific Coast Highway from Huntington Beach to Los Angeles International Airport. And somehow the coastal zone there is not anything like the coastal zone that the residents of San Mateo County get to appreciate on an at-well basis. And I think it's very, very important to keep that in mind. I know some of the commissioners grew up in this county as I did, and what an important resource the coast was to leave when I was growing up in Belmont. And so we have to make sure that we keep in mind the larger issues as well as getting caught in the smaller detail. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Margaret Delano, and next would be April Vargas.
Hello, I'm Meg Delano. I'm the chair of the Pescadero Municipal Advisory Council. ago, George called me and said that it began to make sense that perhaps some sections, such as the sensitive habitats, wetlands, and other resolution inconsistencies with the coastal plan, might well be applied to the entire coastal zone in San Mateo County. So he sent a copy of the entire document to each of the council members last week, and in our initial attempt to read through it, it seemed somewhat vague as to which sections could or, or should be applied to our part of the coast. For example, the policy to promote use of lands parallel to Highway One for the coastal trail might well be something that would be appropriate to apply to our end of the county. However, there are also the issues of wetlands, especially because the entire town of Pescadero does go underwater every few years, and we wouldn't particularly want the entire town to be considered a wetland. So what I want to ask you is, could you direct George to prepare some type of addendum that would clarify to the public which sections might apply to the entire coastal zone and do this as soon as possible, so that if we are affected, that our farmers and property owners could become involved in the discussions, especially in the wetlands and sensitive habitats fairly early on in this process? Additionally, if significant sections do apply to the rest of the coastal zones in San Mateo County, could one session on this be scheduled in the evening in Pescadero, in all fairness, to give the local property owners a chance to attend? The 2:00 PM on a Wednesday discussion for the sensitive habitats and wetlands is just about impossible for our agricultural and contract people to attend. Thank you.
You've given us quite a bit to consider. I hope you'll be able to answer some of those in this process today, do our best. Pescadero, we could go down to a fine restaurant down there.
Right, and bars will be a great place to hold the meeting.
Excellent. Okay. April Vargas, followed by Chuck Kozak.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is April Vargas. I'm a Montara resident. I am an elected member of the Midcoast Community Council. However, as of two months ago, I'm also the San Mateo County Legislative Advocate for the Committee for Green Footsteps. So in my comments to you today, I will speak in that capacity. I want to thank, first of all, the county for initiating this project. This is something that's been needed for a long time, something that the residents of the Midcoast have asked for, to have our local coastal plan updated, and we appreciate the county's willingness to do this. Second of all, the committee extends our sincerest thanks to George Bergman for his exemplary efforts, has really made a very large, complicated project much more manageable, and has been, made it possible for many citizens to actually understand what is involved, what the choices are, and why they should continue to follow the process through. So again, everyone in the county is really very fortunate to have George working with us on that. I wanted to reference the fact that the planning commission has received a letter from the committee, which was included in your packet. One point I wanted to make is that Task Three, at this point, had no comment attached to it, because at this point, we're still working in the community on following up with that, had to do with infrastructure calculations, which are pretty complicated and required a lot of information that needed to be submitted. So as soon as a final draft of Task Three has been put together by the community, the committee will definitely have comments at that time. A couple other comments regarding the straw voting, which George and Terry both mentioned. The committee would like to weigh in and urge you to put the results that are quoted in there into some sort of context. It is true that depending on certain tasks, the actual turnout at these meetings varied wildly. There are a few items, and those are the ones that I think George very intelligently has scheduled for the coastal meetings. A lot of people showed up. Many of them were special interest groups that had certainly their comments need to be taken into effect. But again, as you study these things and hear from community members, I think it's important to put, as I said before, in context who showed up for these meetings, why, and how it would affect the overall outcome. Also, the committee supports the consideration of the design review task first. We, in 2000, we supported the amendment for the house size standards, and we did that based on the county's promise of additional design review standards that would be developed and committed, and submitted to the coastal commission subsequently. For that reason, we are in support of this, and to aid in timely and a smooth transition into design review, we'd like to have those standards modified as soon as possible. And I'm going to take another half a second. I appreciate the number of meetings on the coast that have been scheduled. I would urge the commission, as if at all possible, to add some more meetings so that we'll be, we'll be able to include as many people in the community in an evening time as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. Chuck Kozak, followed by Leonard Warren. And thank you for printing your name today, as usual. I always thank you.
You're welcome. Good afternoon, commissioners. The first line of my notes says to praise George to the angels. We had, I'm talking with my manager, we thank him for the incredible amount of, the incredible amount of work and thoroughness that he put into this, and the, the extent that he went out of his way to make sure that he was, that he was covering these things very thoroughly and very fairly to everybody. I would, would like to comment, though, on sort of an overview to this process. And it relates to the scheduling specifically in the focusing on the Princeton projects is a separate issue. There's a need to determine the infrastructure and the carrying capacity of the midcoast before any of, before any sort of land use decisions can be made in terms of, of how changes might be made in residential or commercial development. We need to be able to look at whether we're able to support these. And I think that these issues will need to be looked at as sort of a package. We have a lot of tasks in there that deal with residential development within non-residential districts, changing the way the commercial development is structured, permitted, change in the uses that are permitted in some of the zoning. We need to have a basis for making those decisions, I think. And the most important one of that is whether we have the capacity to support those changes. So I think it would be wiser and possibly looked upon more favorably at the coastal commission level that this come in as more of a cohesive package, land use package, that's based on actual decisions and data in terms of what the midcoast is able to support. I would agree with April's, or your comments about the straw poll voting. That was a very political process, and there was a lot of different approaches being brought to it. People were, were bringing in extra people. We brought in extra people at sometimes, you know, simply just to get the vote up one way or the other. That needs to be kept in the context of what it was, and may not have been directly representational. There were a large number of people in the communities who were, who were expecting members of the council to be representational, and at these meetings in terms of input and letting everybody's be known. So the actual numbers may not necessarily be directly reflective of, of the way the community felt. I would also agree with having as many of these meetings on the coast as possible, and the inclusion of the Pescadero Council for things that are going to, to extend within the entire coastal areas. Some of these, I can't see how they could be split, you know, to just the midcoast. So, so thank you very much for your attention to this, and I look forward to, I think there will be a lot more work on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Leonard Warren, followed by James Benjamin.
Leonard Warren Albright. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and honorable commissioners. I, I would like to start out saying that I strongly support the midcoast council's position, which is one of the attachments they have, very lengthy paper. George, I think, has done an excellent job with the constraints he was given, but as we get to each of the various tasks, I'm going to disagree with some of the things, but that's not appropriate for this afternoon. Also, support the comments from Half Moon Bay and Committee for Green Footsteps, and I would like to echo all of the comments made by Paul, Catherine, April, Chuck, since Jimmy Benjamin speaking after me, but looking at his letter, I believe, I'll agree with him also. The, the whole process here, well, I shouldn't say the whole process, a big chunk of the process strikes me as the tail wagging the dog. Instead of computing the land, the, the, the build-out population based on land use, what you're supposed to be doing, and state law requires that the zoning be adjusted to match the general plan, not the other way around, you should be revising the land use to keep the previously approved build-out population. In other words, what was approved in 1980 should be the build-out population, and you have to fix the land use to limit the future build-out to that level. The, the purpose of LCP update is to incorporate new information and experience, not to facilitate the desires, the development desires of coastal landowners. Looking at the comments that were in the covered letter, Staff Noah from George, Midcoast house size limits are still too large, and I think that needs to be revisited. They're still the largest of any place in the county. I've already commented on, on the recalculating the residential build-out, that's, that's just upside down. The, the coastal act is to preserve the coast for everyone, again, not just for the coastal landowners. And so the straw voting was totally inappropriate. And there, and, and I raise the objection at nearly every meeting to get it on the record, and I'm raising it here on the record. And so therefore, even the statement of which is the majority and which is the minority view, that is often fundamentally flawed, because on some of the meetings, every person who had ever built a house or in any way profited from development on the coast side showed up to pack the meetings. And there were, there were one or two of those meetings that were packed by that category of people, many of whom don't live there. The elected officials should have been given much more weight in that straw polling. There were, there were typically six to 10 elected officials there, and their votes should have counted for much more than just one citizen. Could I beg your indulgence, because I have, I have a few more real key points.
It seems to me, in the last meeting, you did the same thing. I, I would like to just hold it at three minutes. But I, I have a question here, and I, I don't think it's not appropriate, but precisely what would you want this commission to do in order to have it fair, ethical, and balanced? What would you have us do? I'm thinking of the, I, I don't want to get myself involved in this, but what would be the fair way to that straw poll, the straw poll, what would you have us do?
Put it to a vote of all the voters on the coast side.
If I, if I could, and I, just through the chair, if, an initiative process is a different thing than a public hearing process, or a proposition. We could place a proposition on the ballot and ask folks to vote up or down on a complex matter of the local coastal plan. Now, it is true that in 1986, voters did vote on an initiative that had to do with the local coastal plan, and that process has its virtues, but that's not what we're engaging in. We're engaging in a public hearing process. We do have the discretion, when we hear speak, we take input as input, and we evaluate that input in a number of ways, and I think staff does too. Any straw poll, I should, should digress to, to, to show you, it's taking a grain of salt. It's taken for what it's worth, and that value isn't, you know, it's, 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 it's going to be less than 100% representative. And, but in the, in the hearing process, we're not looking strictly for popularity. We're very, it is, it is helpful to understand where people feel, we're also looking for the wisdom as an input. And, and I think that staff, and we know, when we're hearing for someone who's, community members have elected in their position, to take that perhaps a little differently than someone who just comes in on their own. On the other hand, someone comes in their own, says something very penetrating, hopefully those words, the, the wisdom of those words will find their mark as well. So, I mean, you have to trust a little bit the discretion, well, you don't have to, but I would suggest trusting a little bit the discretion and, and the common sense of both this commission and staff members. On the other hand, some of your points are well-taken. I mean, you're, you're telling me reasons why I should take with a grain of salt certain straw polls, and I kind of already had that in mind, but you're giving me a little more information, and that's helpful. And, you know, I'm not inclined to recommend to the, to the board that they take this out of ours and their hands and just put it to the voters, but hey, if people don't like what we do when we're finished, somebody can circulate a petition and do exactly that, and that may happen. It happened before, and it may happen again.
Thank you, Commissioner Silver. I appreciate it.
I'm going to thank Commissioner Silver for his very wise words, and I'm going to thank you for yours also, and I'm going to follow up by Mr. Benjamin.
Thank you, and good afternoon, commissioners. It's an honor to address you in your new facilities. I just sprinted over from Redwood City, where I had the pleasure of seeing you the last time I came to your meeting, so apologize for the disheveled look. My name is James Benjamin. I'm the chair of the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission, and I appreciate the opportunity that we've been afforded to work with you in the update process. As you may recall, the last time we spoke about this, we invited you to take a look at the way we've been approaching our update. And we've had one of our commissioners designated by the planning commission, Commissioner McCarthy, Jack McCarthy, who's been present at virtually all of the meetings that have taken place at the coast. He's been reporting back to us regularly, and since the coast is an integrated community that we have to plan in coordination in order to achieve a viable coastal act compliant land use plan for the coast, we, we continue to have great interest in this process. We were, in fact, as, as Mr. Burns indicated, sent a short letter, about a page and a quarter to you earlier this afternoon. It did not reflect the great substance of our comments, which we sent to the commission in May of 2002. We raised concerns, we raised concerns about those, and we wanted to be sure that that was reflected, that the, the consideration was given, that we needed to have a plan that would allow us to achieve the goals of our own local coastal program, and that we would work together to be effective in providing one for the entire coast. Commissioner McCarthy was frank, very candid with us in his concerns about the participation in the polls. I discussed it in my letter, and will bore you with it again. I think you've heard it from a number of other commissioners. We encourage you to take them in the context that Commissioner Silver wisely recommended, and you may choose to discount some of the numbers or perhaps all of them. We believe that Commissioner McCarthy's balanced judgment might have, have reflected a bit more in the summary in terms of the compatibility of the recommendations with the city of Half Moon Bay and the concerns that we have raised, since the unincorporated coast is within the Half Moon Bay spirit influence. We have a special relationship with you, and we sympathize with the difficulty that you have in being able to build this plan. We should be working with you and want to be sure that we don't walk too heavily on the process. We're sensitive to the county's role. At the same time, we, we remain concerned, and perhaps are slightly more concerned than we were in May of 2002, that the concerns that we have raised have not been properly addressed yet. We hope that we can do this at a local level. I don't know how the city, I have no clairvoyance, I don't know how the, the city council of Half Moon Bay will react to whatever comes out, but I do know that in the past, they've expressed strong concerns that have been effective in interacting with state agencies to try to make their, their concerns about their ability to do what they're trying to do for the coast compatible with other agencies. And I hope that we can avoid that. We'd much prefer to have them addressed locally. Let's see, finally, I would just echo the concerns of some of my prior speakers, and strongly urge you to reverse the ratio of public hearings that are held in Half, in, on the coast side and on, in Redwood City. Many members of the public who would like to participate in this process feel rather excluded because of the time and the location. If the meetings were held in the jargon, perhaps 75%, were held in the coast side, perhaps in Pescadero, as one of the speakers indicated, I think you might get some valuable insight that might not be available to you at these meetings. So we're happy to answer questions, and look forward to working with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so very, very kindly. Judy Taylor, our last speaker that I have flipped.
Yeah. I think the first thing we all need to look at before we have to have a meeting inside on a day like today.
Because we wouldn't pay attention.
Well, there is that. I'd just like to echo something that Leonard said a moment ago, that the Coastal Act makes the coast side, the coast of California, something for everybody. Not only is it just not for vacant property owners, but it's not just for the people who live there either. And it's been a very frustrating experience for me, as an about environmentalist for 30 years, to deal with some of the things that appear very, very short sighted, particularly in the realm of affordable housing. And I would encourage the Planning Commission and the county, as they go through their LCP review, particularly when it comes to non-conforming lots, because that's the cheapest dirt we're going to be able to get our hands on, to find some way of developing some sort of a program where we can create some smaller, affordable homes on those properties that will not meet with the same kind of community resistance that they do today. To that end, I found it intriguing in reading the Coastal Act itself, Section 3010, or 3010, I guess it is, legislature hereby finds and declares that this division shall not be construed as authorizing commission or a local government acting pursuant to this division to exercise that power to grant or deny a permit in a manner which will take or damage private property. And I think that's something that gets lost a lot of times, and there are a couple of places where I see that that plays out. One is in looking at build-out numbers. If somebody has got a non-conforming lot, you can regulate their use of that lot, but when you regulate it to the point where they can't build, then it does become a taking. So that lot has to be counted in the build-out. I don't see any other way around it. The county's not in a position these days to buy these properties, and that has to be taken into consideration. And as a corollary to that, I have been hoping for a number of years that we would have some kind of resolution around sensitive habitat lots. Bolsochica has held up a lot of times as being the answer to all of the problems, as finally answering, you cannot build on certain properties. To a certain extent, that's true, but if you've got a 50 by 100-foot lot that's completely covered with riparian vegetation, how are you going to get a 30 or 50-foot setback from that riparian vegetation? And there are not huge numbers, but there are probably 30 property owners on the coast side, in the unincorporated area, that are impacted by this. And so to have some sort of a mechanism through the LCP review where we can deal with a mitigation bank, where there can be some sort of habitat restoration someplace else, some sort of solution here, because the solution right now is that these people have to spend $50,000 to $100,000 on studies, reports, attorneys, go all the way through you to the Coastal Commission, and the project is going to get denied at every place because it is not consistent with regulations. There is no way to make a project consistent with the regulations. I've got one client who's got a lot that's bisepted. There is a building envelope there, but there's a creek that runs right across it, and there is no way that that property owner can develop the property, and they're not in a financial position to take on that kind of legal battle. The only other two comments that I would make, I also, I contacted the Manufactured Housing Association. George, I'm not sure, do you have the state regulations on manufactured housing?
Yes, we do.
Okay, all right, so that's been handled then. And the only other comment is, we need jobs locally. Please do whatever you can do to make Princeton particularly job-friendly for local workers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very kind. We have Kerry Burke, followed by David Beaumont.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, member of the commission, Kerry Burke, Half Moon Bay. And I did have the good fortune to attend several of the workshop meetings, however, not the fortitude to go to all of them, they were quite extensive. And I'd also like to compliment George, Lisa, and all the others that did such a comprehensive job, and at times it was decisive and very spirited types of meetings we had, but it's gotten distilled down to the summary sheets that I think will be very helpful in all of the future meetings that you're going to be holding. I would also request that to deal with the crossover issues with the sensitive habitat and wetlands that you do support, the PMAX request to have a meeting in Pescadero. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much. David Beaumont.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I don't need to apprise you of George's outstanding efforts here. His level of detail that he has placed into this has turned this into a superlative job. It really was a superhuman effort. Not saying I'm handling it, but Lisa also did a fantastic job here. The senior planner has encouraged throughout this process all members of the community to participate, and it's disappointing when sometimes that view negatively, it's not representing previously held views by now members of the public. I'd like to echo the Director's comments regarding that viewing this now, at this point in time, as being the period for forming well-articulated reasoning behind the issues is what this process is about, as opposed to long endless trails of people coming up and giving you their side support or the other. I very much concur with Commissioner Silver's comments that this is indeed a time for reasoned analysis of the issues. The schedule is well thought out, and we support it. The Coast Side Planning Council and many other people have participated in this. We ask that you do listen to the broader spectrum of the community that has been present throughout this process, beyond narrowly represented groups, be they mandated or otherwise, and there's widespread support for dissenting views from what some of those groups would otherwise have you believe. Also like to echo the Director's comment on the number, great number actually, of interrelationships between the housing elements update and the LCP update. We look forward to your addressing the various nexus that exist between them. Lastly, you will be submitting comments to you based upon George's final revision prior to your August 27th meeting, and thanks again in advance for, it will be a great commitment on all of your, part of your time for very long deliberations on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very kind. This chairman is, excuse me, plowing new fields, as it were, and therefore, it would seem that this would be an appropriate time to call for a close of the public meeting and discuss these matters before us, here and now. So therefore, gentlemen, if you would confer, I'd know we suspend the public hearing for the present. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner.
Before you begin your deliberations, I'd like to provide a little more clarification. And to echo what I said in my opening remarks, this relates to the request by Ms. Delano from Pescadero Municipal Advisory Council, and the comments I brought up about the possible wider application of some of these tasks. My recommendation for your commission is that I, much like Mag Delano had indicated, I prepare a list of the tasks, and identify the very few tasks that I believe could, your commission could decide that you want to extend it for the entire coastal zone, and I could do that, make it clear for everybody involved, to identify what tasks are purely mid-coast, and up till now, all of them really are mid-coast. The decision then, the decision is whether your commission believes it's appropriate to extend your power. So basically, right now, all of the tasks are just for the mid-coast area. But what your commission is wrestling with is, does it make sense to have two definitions of sensitive habitats, one for the mid-coast and one for the south coast? So at a future date, I'll present a list that shows where you may want to say, does this make sense to have two, or do we want to have one, and make a decision that way? So I don't think we should rush it to start scheduling Pescadero. We take it at steps, and basically, I'm going to ask your commission at a future date, for these certain definitions, does your commission recommend having a separate definition for the mid-coast versus the rest of the coastal zone, or have one definition for the entire coastal zone, and based on that decision, we decide who else we get involved in this process? The second thing is, there are a few people that have talked about the ordering of the tasks. There seems to be uniform support that design review should go first, and Staff does support that. I should provide a little background as to why the Princeton amendments, our Staff was indicating breaking down also. The Princeton landowners had an interest in those changes occurring soon. It was out of a sense of fairness, basically, on my part, it didn't really come, they didn't, they did not actually approach me and say, can we fast-track those? But I thought that since we were fast-tracking the design review at the request of the council, I anticipate, I thought out of a sense of equity, since I knew that the Pescadero landowners wanted to, Princeton, sorry, Princeton, thank you, Princeton landowners wanted to move theirs along, I brought that up as a suggestion. Today at the meeting, other points have come up about the wisdom of going too fast, or the lack of wisdom of maybe going too fast with the Princeton amendments, particularly before we talk about infrastructure capacity and data. So Staff does not have a strong recommendation that the Princeton amendments break off, I just, it was more out of a sense of equity than anything else. I just wanted to provide that adequate information.
And if you'll indulge me, I'd like to give you a few suggestions, maybe to help focus your discussion a little bit, along the lines of that I discussed earlier. Because I think we need to have, in fairness to everyone who's participated in this, I think we ought to have some ground rules set out in advance. This has all the potential, at any given meeting, to devolve into chaos if we don't, I think, because there's a lot of strongly held opinion here, there's been a lot of work done, there's a lot of emotion behind these issues, and I think they are things that many people could comment upon at some length, and we need to, rather than cutting someone off in the middle, we need to sort of tell them in advance what they can expect. We often get questions, how long am I going to be able to speak? And I take a guess at that, and I always feel bad when, for some reason, the time ends up more limited because they feel they've been gotten the old bait and switch. So I'm going to make some suggestions here, and then comment actually on the two items of George's product as well. My suggestion would be for some, just very straightforward logistics and ground rules, that you request that all speakers slip to the end at the start of the meeting, any given meeting, not during the meeting, but at the beginning of the meeting. You might want to grant, you know, five minutes dispensation there, but I think realistically, if people know in advance, we should be able to do that. That you plan these meetings for two hours, meaning the 2:00 meetings to 4:00 p.m., the 7:00 meetings to 9:00 p.m. That you plan 15 minutes for Staff to make its presentation on the items on that agenda, and for the commission to complete any questions and get any answers from Staff, that would be the goal in that regard. That you plan one hour for public testimony, that you determine the speaking limit, this time limit, by dividing 60 minutes by the number of speakers present. Then at the end of that, if you've got 20 speakers, and you've set a three-minute time limit, and you get done in 30 minutes, and you've got 30 minutes left, that would be to offer people the opportunity to speak again, or whatever you like, but that's how you set the initial goal. That we then plan the final 45 minutes for questions, deliberation, and action by the Planning Commission on the items on that agenda. And again, what we're doing here is, we're not, we don't anticipate these being wordsmithing sessions, because you're not going to have actual policy language or ordinance language in front of you. You're going to be basically giving George direction on this issue, we prefer this approach to that approach, so that he can then develop that language. So you'll be deliberating, I think, basic options and approaches as it goes to detailed language. That would take two hours. That you allow up to one additional hour of time for the meeting, if the Chair's discretion could be scattered among those earlier tasks, but that we have a clear goal, the two-hour meeting, essentially a curfew at a three-hour time, so that these meetings would last no later than 5:00 p.m. or 10:00 p.m., and that we, I would hope that that would prove to be the minority of meetings, that we get done more often closer to two hours than three, but we need to recognize, I think, there could be items when two, this isn't realistic, but I think these meetings going on past 10:00 p.m., especially, the quality of deliberation starts to decline, I think, in a way that is part of it. That you encourage the public to focus in their testimony on what they want and why, particularly among the alternatives that are before you, or derivations of those, but to try to avoid the, what's wrong with what other people want, what's, all the lengthy history of most of these issues in the community, but simply try to encourage people to focus in on, I've studied this, I've examined it, I've thought about it, I've discussed it with my friends, and I come out preferring, you know, X over Y because of one, two, three. I think that's what the commission is really looking for at this point. That we put all this, or whatever else you agree upon, in a memo, to be distributed to all parties on the mailing list prior to the first hearing next time, so people can get that in advance. And then my only other two comments, I'm going to go take a little liberty with what George says, and suggest that I do think, I think when we get to the point, it's going to be very difficult to have two different definitions of wetlands and two different definitions of sensitive habitats. There may be, certainly in the map, there could be differences. You may decide that something mapped as a sensitive habitat isn't, or something that isn't, should be, and you may have your, you know, your interpretations of those policies. But Gary and I have been kibitzing it here a little bit, and I think it's going to be difficult to say that the wetland in one place is not a wetland in another. All of there may be nuances there we need to deal with. So for that reason, I think you are getting, going to get into some decisions in that area that potentially affect the rest of the coastal zone. So my suggestion would be that we simply, in that regard, maybe settle the matter now, and schedule the January 26th meeting for the evening on the coast side. I would suggest we try to do that in the city of Half Moon Bay, at their community center, something since that, I think it's, you know, roughly equally convenient to people on the mid-coast and the south coast, as opposed to asking people from Pescadero to navigate through and on up the mid-coast to the meeting. So we might try that. And then on Princeton, my suggestion would be that you leave the schedule as it is, and take that item up on the 10th. The reasoning is, just as George said, to recognize that there is a, I think, I don't think anyone would, someone speaking out of school, to say there's kind of a different point of view out in Princeton that might prevail on much of the rest of the mid-coast. They're different, you know, it's all a little place out there, and those, I guess mostly property owners, there aren't too many residents out there, feel strongly about their situation, and George is right, we were trying to respect their sort of priorities along with those of the mid-coast council, and that rather than reordering this right now, that you take that up early, so you can see what it amounts to, and then at the conclusion of that hearing, make a decision about whether you feel that's worthy of some sort of separate tract to the Coastal Commission, or should be held for consideration of the other, whether we have 20 passes or whatever. But that we at least give them the opportunity to present their concerns early in the process, and like George said, I don't think we had any real overt demand from them to fast-track that, but that would give a chance to support that if they wanted to, and you could consider the merits of that. So those are my suggestions about setting those ground rules or something different, that we get the word out early, so people know what to expect, and then do that January 26th meeting in a way that would accommodate Pescadero folks. And the only other thing I wanted to mention, George and I discussed this briefly, I think where we have these multiple tasks on a given agenda, we're going to suggest that we present and consider both tasks at the same time. Rather than try to divide an already tight meeting into two pieces where we go through everything I described twice, that we simply have George present all the items on that agenda, you clarify those items, take testimony on those items, and then probably, perhaps when you come to action, it would be appropriate to deliberate them separately, but I've watched the commission over the years, I think you can keep the thoughts on the two topics separate and in your mind at the same time. I just feel that trying to divide a two- to three-hour meeting into two completely separate pieces would be very difficult. Also, some people, you know, who are here to speak, you know, expecting them to maybe necessarily stick around for the whole meeting, speak twice, that sort of thing, it seems like letting them get their promise in all at once would make sense. So those are some suggestions. I'm not trying to get take to the commission, I'm just trying to give you a starting point for some logistics or, which is really the purpose of today's meeting.
And I just have one small clarification.
And I just have one small clarification. As with everything we do, there's always one exception. What Terry was saying is correct, and he underscored what I had said, that basically I'm going to be presenting concepts for tender approval, we give the direction and prepare the final language. The only exception, and this is the reason I'm bringing it up now, is the item that you'll be considering at your next meeting, where the whole, the entire task was to redraft the design review regulations. And there we will be presenting a completed set of, a set of work in its language, actually two versions, two alternatives. And there may be some wordsmithing comments at that point.
Right. But otherwise, we'll be dealing with more like concepts and choosing between alternatives.
Right.
I would also suggest that when we get these rules and regulations, our motives, per on, or whatever you pronounce it, that we publish as a broadside, so that it's put up before every meeting, posted on the door or something, for those who don't get the ordinary mailing list.
Sure.
It's a good idea, I would assume, to do it anyway, to be honest with you.
Gentlemen. One thing I'd like to ask, Terry, you gave us something additional to chew on, but I'd like to, and I'd like to ask both, well, staff's response on the suggestions that have been made, that we consider reversing, or at least partially reversing the ratio of meetings from Redwood City to the coast side.
Yeah, with the change on the twenty-sixth, I was counting, you know, today, I don't, this is a process meeting, and I think this isn't about the substance of this. So if you take this out of the loop, and you added the twenty-sixth as a meeting on the coast, then you'd have five here, five there. And what I'm looking at, I, someone commented that they thought George had been reasonably astute in scheduling for the coast, the things where there's substantial higher levels of interest and perhaps disagreement. And I was looking down the list, and I thought that was pretty close to correct, from what I understand. And for instance, the build-out data and non-conforming parcels is, I think there's people that feel strongly about that, but George has actually been working with a fairly small subcommittee on, in a very close working relationship with that issue. And I think the details of that that are still perhaps in some dispute are issues that that small group is mainly going to be focusing on. Whereas the, oh, as an example, the residential growth one, that I think is something that broad segments of the community have some strong opinions about, and you're going to perhaps hear from a larger number of people there. So the one, you know, that with this one switch, we end up kind of fifty-fifty. And the other thing I was going to say, but I didn't mention, was that I think you can reserve the option of rescheduling at any point a meeting to the coast. We just, I think in fairness to candy, we'd need perhaps a two-meeting lead on that to have a chance to locate a place and get the distance set up. So later in those last four meetings, you know, moving the February twenty-third meeting to the coast side or something, that, I think that's an easy option for the future. I think it's probably the ones through December, November twelfth, December tenth, those are ones we probably ought to settle today if we can. And we really only have two scheduled here in that timeframe. So if you wanted to move either of those over there, I think that would be a good decision to make today. I think we could, we could take a, you know, December tenth might be a good time at the end of that meeting, sort of, it's the end of the year, see how we're doing, and do what we want to do differently in the remaining meetings. So I guess I'd suggest move the twenty-sixth over there. Look at the October eighth and twenty-second.
That's, just for clarity.
January.
Yeah. It's the only one that's the twenty-sixth, but still helps us find it if you say the month, too.
And look at the eighth and twenty-second, see if you want to move either of those. And then as to the rest, I...
I'm sorry, the eighth?
I'm sorry, October eighth or twenty-second.
That does make it quicker, because otherwise they're going to scan the whole right column of that.
And then the one thing...
And what was the other one, the last one?
So I'd look at October eighth or twenty-second, do you want to move either of those to the coast? And then I recommend you do move the January twenty-sixth meeting to the coast. And let me just look here on...
And so that'd be the coast in the evening on the twenty-sixth?
Right. We'd move it...
If we decided to do it.
What I was suggesting was seven PM, and we try to do that in Half Moon Bay.
All right.
So people in Pescadero will have a little easier time getting there.
I must say, the suggestion of Pescadero, I was very tempted to do that. But it does make it hard on folks from the other part of the coast.
We can always run down there for dinner.
He had an early start. You know, we always love seeing the folks in Pescadero, too, not just the food.
Well, another possibility that day, I don't know why you want to do this, but you could also do that meeting twice, I suppose, in the afternoon, and one place in the evening and the other, but I believe that's, to me, that's probably overkill.
Yeah. Interesting concept.
So the other thing I would add, I guess, is that I think when we get to the end of this in March, George is going to have language for each of these amendments, and we're going to be down to, depends on what meeting it is, isn't all of that. I think that'll be another good time to kind of reassess the process. So I don't want you to feel that you're going to have to resolve all of these text amendments, so to speak, in one meeting in March. I think we can look at what we've got at that point, and make some prudent decisions about that. But I, I, I really appreciate George's scheduling this the way he has, because I think we need to keep the pressure on ourselves to move this forward. The community is honestly getting impatient with the time this has taken, I think, and so is another group such as the coastal commission, I think. So I think we need to try to move it all. And we still have the board, and then the coastal commission deliberations to go after this is done.
Oh, is there anybody adverse to moving, say, October eighth of the year?
Let's ask George if he, if you were to move one of those meetings, which you think is of more interest to a larger group of folks on the coast side.
That's infrastructure capacity.
Twenty-second, yeah.
Twenty-second.
Why don't we, why don't we move that, and then as you, Terry was recommending the one on the twenty, January twenty... Now I'm doing it, to the coast side, and specifically have that, that one on January twenty-sixth in Half Moon Bay.
So we do October twenty-second and January twenty-sixth to the coast side in the evening. I think the October twenty-second meeting, we try to target for the midcoast, and the one in January to the Half Moon Bay location. And then that gives your first, you know, all but one of your first six meetings are on the coast side.
One thing that, if I could, just in the, Terry, in your description of how you might consider running the meetings, one thing that I'm, does concern me, while it's always good to aim for a shorter period of time, knowing that you aren't going to be able to do it. So you aim for a two-hour meeting, get a three-hour meeting. If we're actually going to the trouble of getting people out to a hearing, you know, I'd rather have a three-and-a-half hour meeting and hear from people thoroughly than have a shorter meeting and not. But I do recognize that we don't want these meetings to go too late in the evening. If we aim for three and a half, it might be hard to do it under four and a half. So, but also, I do recall one, one hearing we had on the coast side, and we had so many speakers, I think we were trying to limit people to two minutes. And it just wasn't possible for, even people who were very concise were having a real tough time getting their points covered, and the time, the speaker limits were just so short. And I maybe remember any corrections, but I think it was two minutes. Because we did just that, okay, did a head count, and then divided by the available time. And can't remember, that may have even been a meeting I chaired. And if so, I think I ended up letting a lot of people go over. And, you know, it's, because they really, as long as they were really making points and being cogent and not being repetitious. But I do think that if we have a lot of people who want to be heard, and we have a time, it's, it's difficult from, depending on what the subject is, it's, I think it's pretty tough for most people to cover a subject meaningful, meaningfully in under three minutes. Though some that don't have, you just want to say I agree with someone, they can do that unless, we can pick up time on those. But if, if it means that we just have to go longer, or even extra meetings, because the time, you know, to allow people a meaningful time to get their comments out there, I would favor doing that. I don't think it hurts to keep, have a goal of trying to keep things shorter, knowing that they may well end up being longer, but...
Well, an option might be to extend the times I suggested by thirty minutes. I'm looking at two and a half and three and a half hours. And if you put that additional time into testimony, then you'd have ninety minutes.
Or just doing that, or knowing that we're willing to do that, you know, we've got forty people that want to speak, and forty times three comes to whatever, that we just need to do, you know, that we are willing to do that if necessary.
Well, it would be another option, is to say you'll take, you'll set the time the way I described, but not less than three minutes per speaker, would be another way to look at it. And say you're going to give everyone at least three minutes, regardless of how long.
I suspect that's a good rule of thumb. And, you know, while we hope to be plenty of people speaking, it's nice if we can even give people five minutes or more, if it works out that way. But, yeah, I do think that we, realistically, have sort of a minimum, a minimum time limit that we're not going to try to cram people below. I suspect that three minutes is probably there, which I'd probably exceed it at this point.
I do believe we'll try to be fair and equitable, but Commissioner Silver has tipped our hand, and therefore, we're going to be working longer hours, as it should be. So if that's agreeable, then we could adjust this to, what's, two and a half hours? Is that a hundred and fifty minutes? But anyway, two and a half hour goal, three and a half hour limit, and that we would set the time by assessing the number of speakers and the time available, but in any event, not less than three minutes per speaker.
And we certainly want to hold the guest folks, if we can get done in two hours and then end with these meetings, and people are happy with the product, that's great. It doesn't mean we failed if we have to do it quickly.
I guess I'd have to say it would be my hope that George has done his job well, and actually collected a reasonable grouping of the public's input, and so that...
That's what we've done.
It won't be like we're starting out bare naked on a new topic.
But I think there is a difference between seeing your input amalgamated into a single report and coming and saying it to you, you know, someone saying it to you themselves.
That's true also.
Do you, the chair? Hey. Question to the council. I don't want to press public, but under the Brown Act, if you can't set time limit if there's a hundred speakers wanting to speak, and you basically have to allow them to speak?
You can set reasonable time limits. So if you had, if you had a meeting and there's a hundred people, you know, the way it would work out is you'd end up having to continue the meeting. I mean, you'd have to, you'd have to somehow reschedule and accommodate it, so people could have some reasonable means of communicating. And that's, that's really the point of these meetings, is to be able to take the public input in some fair way. But that doesn't mean that you have to give everybody, you know, five minutes or fifteen minutes or half an hour to speak. You could, you can shorten it to two minutes or three minutes, whatever the commission deems to be a reasonable amount of time.
Another thing we could put in here is, just as a, I mean, I think there are sort of rules and suggestions, and we, as another suggestion, we could encourage affiliated groups of individuals to try to organize their testimony to avoid redundancy in our petition. And I think the groups, you know, they, we don't have to say who those are, they have their own natural affiliations, and they probably change issue to issue. But I think they, I think we do have a group of people here that are used to working together and communicating with each other, and see the commission often enough to know the value and the economy of time and everything else. So I think with a little bit of encouragement for that, some of these groups could, could perhaps organize a little bit in advance to, if you make this point, I'll make that point. And we'll all stand up again and say we agree with all those points or something. We've seen all these groups do that before. So I think we could hope for some of that. And they're all going to want to get home, and it's on Wednesday night at ten o'clock, there must be something worth seeing, but they're all going to want to get home, too, you know.
Nothing better than that, George. All right. Any further? I think we've covered, have we not covered just about three?
We're going to be bucking twenty-four.
Oh, yes, we are. Twenty-four seven. Listen, can we have a motion to close this meeting on table for now?
Well, I guess, well, do we?
Do we even, the motion would change that close time?
But I'd like this for the commission to either endorse what we've covered today or something else, so that we, I don't want this to be on George or whatever. That's not what the commission said, so...
I certainly be, I'd like to make a motion that we endorse and accept the recommendation from staff regarding the process we're going to use with the amendments that, that the meeting of October twenty-second will be moved from Redwood City during the afternoon to the coast side during the evening. And also, January twenty-sixth of next year will be moved from Redwood City to the evening, seven PM in Half Moon Bay. And also to note that we will entertain flexibility. At certain points during this process, we'll be taking stock of where we've come and where we have to go, and we may entertain additional meetings on the, it's certainly possible that we'll, that we'll entertain additional meetings on the coast side. And also that, as a general rule of thumb, that the comments made by Planning Administrator Terry Burns are what we will endeavor to adhere to in running these public meetings and hearings with the amendment that, or the clarification that we'll try, we will endeavor to see that minimum time allowed to speakers doesn't drop below three minutes in any case. And if necessary, we'll hold additional hearings. And that also, instead of having a two- and three-hour goal for the length of meetings, it'd probably be more realistic, two and a half and three and a half.
And I'll try to find a better word than curfew, because I understand what you're saying, that you're not going to just cut the meeting off at ten-thirty because it's three and a half hours.
Well, but I, but in deference to the public, it's nice.
I just want the public to be prepared, that if you're saying it's ten fifteen, we need to wrap up in fifteen minutes, that they're not going to surprise them.
We're not going to be going to one AM.
Right.
Even though I was a member of local government, I learned to do my best work at one AM at one time. But it's a, it's nice not to put the public through that, or...
We're older now.
And that's according to you.
So, yeah, I think that's a motion. And my parenthetical comments at the end are not meant to be part of the motion.
Well, that is a motion I will second. Thank goodness, all in favor?
Aye.
So we will see you on August twenty-seventh on the coast side. Have we got a place yet?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
We do?
We do. Oh, Granada.
Granada School.
With chairs.
With chairs, no tables, or no tables or benches. We have to go for four hours.
The commission's hoping for some chairs with backs on them, and I guess they, do they still have those little kids' chairs out there? We'll try to find some adult chairs.
And they're going, oh, I don't know, we've got, we have most of our...
Put our place.
And there are chairs.
And that meeting, so just, just to reiterate, so at that meeting, we will expect speaker slips in by seven. We'll plan to run the meeting from two and a half to three and a half hours. George will have about a ten-minute presentation, with time for some questions and answers by the commission, for a total of about fifteen minutes. We plan on ninety minutes of public testimony, and set the time accordingly, but not less than three minutes a speaker. We'll reserve at the end an expected forty-five minutes, or perhaps somewhat longer, for the commission to deliberate. And what we'll be asking you to do at the end of that meeting is, for sure, to select and give direction on one of the two basic alternatives for the design review standards, and then focus in on any language changes you wish to make in that particular alternative. So I think the goal would be, are we going to do design reviews sort of this way or that way? And then within that way, the way you select, are there any changes? So I think what the public should be focusing on is their preferred approach generally. We like this, this general set of standards better than this one because... And then within their preferred approach, is there anything that they'd like to see changed? So that you can then be prepared to say, okay, I'm going to go with that approach, and I'm going to change these sections to accommodate them, so you understand that.
I'd just like to add one thing. Lisa Alizaza has been working throughout the last year with the Design Review Committee, and continues to work on this project, and I would be sharing my comments with her. And she... And I, she, she has been working with a graphics section, and we are gonna be releasing with the staff report a document that should facilitate easy understanding of the, a comparative assessment of the two versions side by side, so that you'll be able to identify the differences at a glance and be able to home in on the differences. So we're working with a graphics section to do that, so it'll help the public as well as your commission discern the difference between the two versions and select a preferred approach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Paul.
May I ask you, just that you ask for speaker slips to be in by the end of the staff presentation, so that people, if you're in the meeting, have a chance to see what the issues are and whether they wanna speak on them. I think 7:00 o'clock is when we listen.
I would feel like it'll allow 10 minutes after, but I, I think...
Well, we're gonna request that they be in at the start of the meeting, but not later than the end of the staff presentation. How's that?
Are you humble?
Yeah. About the time, many of the people on the coast, they have, I mean, the evening, frequently, as George will let you know, too, arrive after the time, and although Terry's a great, excellent recommendation to divide employee, this been discussing, we're great, that particular issue will really affect a lot of people, they just, you know... We'll put a, I'll tell you what we'll do. We'll put a information in the notice that would allow them to get their request to speak in, in advance of the meeting, to Candy or George.
Well, then we'll have to confirm, one, one, one thing we'll need to do, one, that would be okay, but one problem there, people may put a request to speak a week ahead of the meeting, then for some reason not attend the meeting. And so if, if we're looking to get a realistic head count, which is why, I understood the reason that staff was suggesting we get speaker slips in early, is to do a head count, divide the time, come with a reasonable time limit. And if we have an unrealistic count of the speaker slips, 'cause, you know, 20% or 10% more people have sent in speaker slips that actually come to the meeting, it sort of defeats the purpose. And because we'd have to at some point, if we do get speaker slips headed, sent in ahead of time, the only way we're gonna know is if we just say, we have the following speaker slips, are you here? And that in itself is gonna take time. So I'm wondering...
I think the inverse problem, though, is that we get, we think we're closing in on...